Good. Okay, here we go. We're gonna go. Call the Planning Commission to order this June 15th, 2022. If staff can call roll, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Don Daniels.
Here.
Phil Combs. Wagaman. Ryan Pearson.
Here.
Ryan Parsons. And Robert Estrada is excused. And Lynn Larson is traveling. So you do have four members in the court, Mr. Chair.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Before us, we have the minutes of, this says June 1st, but it's June 8th.
June 8th, correct.
June 8th, 2022. Looking for a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Person. And Mr. Wagaman, second. Any discussion? Changes? Seeing or hearing none? All those in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The minutes of the June 8th, 2022 passes written. Thank you. Do we have any changes to our agenda?
No, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Public comment. At this time, anyone wishing to speak to the commissioners, you can speak on any topic. Please step up to the microphone, state your name and the city you reside in.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. James Guerrero. I live in Lakewood, Washington. It's good to see all you guys again. I missed being on the other side of the dais. So I'm here on behalf of the Sycamore Island Corporation. I'm a member of that body. I apologize for missing the public hearing that you had on the comp plan amendments, but I just wanted to say a word in favor of amendment number two, I think it is. It's the rezone of some of the properties. So basically, the Sycamore Island Corporation owns the property between Bill's Boathouse and Wadsworth along on the water. So there's actually two properties there. We own the one that's kind of more northernmost. And it is, we have three rental buildings on it, but we also have our parking and boat storage and some garages for the people that live on the island. So that's the majority of the property that we use for storing vehicles, and we have a boat garage and everything. So the reason we're in support of the rezone is what that does is, it doesn't, so we currently have three single-family residences on the property. We're not looking to put more than that on there, but we would like to consolidate them at some point so that we freeze up more property for our other uses. And so that's, that's why we're in favor of that particular item. So I want to speak on that. And while I'm up here, I did have one other thing I wanted to just mention in the way that this board operates with the public. In, in that when you have public hearings, the public has a chance to speak. But they rarely get a chance to hear the, the planning commissioners' comments in that same meeting. It's, it's generally put off to the next meeting to, to state your opinions and actually have a dialogue about it. And I'd suggest that it might, I think it might be better for the public to get feedback right away, even if you're not going to decide at that point, but just to hear what people think about it. And, and I think that would help foster that interaction with the public. So I'll just throw that out there for what it's worth.
Great. Thank you so much, Mr. Guerrero. All right. Seeing or hearing, I don't see anyone on YouTube or signed up, so we'll close the public comment at this time. We have no public hearing. And Mr. Bueller?
Good evening, Commission members. You have three items on the agenda this evening. Action on your comprehensive plan amendments, discussion of the tree preservation code update, and a review of climate change action plan. I'd like to talk a little bit about the first two items before we get into a full discussion on either. First of all, we have just finished putting together a draft or redlined version of the tree code. So you will see that for the first time this evening. That has been a work in progress. We met last week. We took all the comments from the commissioners. We asked you to participate, survey. Four of the seven provided information. We then coalesced that into a draft code, really based upon comments from the ad hoc committee, their report, as well as best practices. So you will be presented this evening, a version of what we think we heard from the Planning Commission. Now, this is again, from what we heard, so we're going to be asking you if we got it right. The, the other thing to be very careful of is what is being presented to you is not a staff recommendation. It is not a planning commission recommendation. It's really an amalgamation of your comments based upon this process. It is a pathway for the development of a tree preservation code. There are numerous pathways. This is just one. But we need to have some sort of version before we get out into the public hearing itself, so that the public can comment on exactly what it is the city proposes to do. In addition, Courtney Brunel is having another tree commentary with the public, and she would like to present the code and go through it with those who are interested parties. So you may not particularly like everything in this code. That's fine. It's just a point along the process so that we can introduce really a difficult subject. It will go through various iterations before you have a final document. So I just wanted to let you be aware of, as we enter into this discussion, you know, this is what we are presenting. It is no way a final document. The other comment that I would make, I'm not sure that the commission wants to do all three items this evening, including climate change. So if there's not the energy to move forward with climate change, we can certainly bump it to another meeting. We are prepared to talk about it, but I leave that up to you. I know that Ms. Brunel will take about an hour on her presentation. So with that, I turn it back to the commission.
Great. Thank you. Yeah, we'll, we'll move forward and then we'll see how the first two items go before we commit to the review of the climate change action plan. If that's, I see a lot of thumbs up. So, so are we going to do the action on the 2022 comp plan amendments first?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay, go right ahead, Ms. Tiffany.
Thank you. Believe it or not, after how many times the planning commission has seen these items, we are here tonight for action on the seven amendments which are included in the 2022 comprehensive plan cycle. There have been a series of discussions starting in January, so a number of times that these things have been with the planning commission for discussion. A public hearing was also held on May 18th, and the responses to comments received that evening were provided to the planning commission on June 1st. No changes were requested on June 1st by the planning commission for the amendments that were put before you. However, you certainly can suggest amendments this evening and consider those as the commission. And then as of right now, we are scheduled for action tonight, but if you decide you do need more time, that's perfectly fine. So one more time, a quick review. The first item is rezoning one parcel near St. Clair Hospital to help protect trees on that site. The second is the Tillicum Neighborhood Plan and Center of Local Importance. And just a reminder here in that red text to verify when the commission is ready to make, or take action on the proposed resolution, that there are, is one clarification that's needed from the commission, which is which parcels to rezone. If you recall, there were a couple of options presented to you. The third item was the Housing Chapter and Related Amendments to Title 18A and the Development Regulations. The fourth is related to adult family homes being allowed or not in the Air Corridor 1 and 2 zones. The fifth amendment is reflecting the adoption of Vision 2050 and renaming centers of local importance to be consistent with that. The sixth is updating a number of maps within the comprehensive plan that are obsolete with recent land use changes and updates to the Parks Legacy Plan. And the final was a review of parking requirements in both Title 18A and Title 18C. So if I could, Mr. Chair, this was one item that was brought to the staff over this past week from one of the planning commission members. In Amendment 22-02, there was a request to change the designation of the items listed in Item B8 about improvements at Harry Todd Park from done to ongoing. There is no objection at all from staff to make that change. So if someone were to want to make that amendment tonight, you certainly can. Other than that, there is a proposed motion if the planning commission feels it's ready to do so. But again, this is up to you as a commission to decide if we're ready to take action this evening. And with that, I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, great. Before us, we have that recommendation to the City Council of the 2022-04 of the comp plan amendments. Do you want us to go one by one, or we can do all of them at one time?
I would propose we do them all at once unless there, unless we have an objection.
Okay. So at this time then, I'm looking for a motion on the 2022 comp plan amendments-04 is the resolution. And so I'm just looking for a motion at this time.
I'll, I'll motion to approve with the amendment as written.
Okay, and? Yeah, we can, yes, Mr. Bueller.
Okay. The process is to make a motion and a second to approve the resolution, and then come back with subsequent motions for amendments.
Yep. Great. So we do have Mr. Combs made a motion to accept the resolution 2022-04. Do I have a second? Mr. Pearson, do we have any comment on that? I do have to say one thing, even though on the 2022, the fourth, fourth of the adult family homes, even though I don't quite agree with the proposal, but due to the legal part of it, you know, I will favorably just support it, but even though I don't quite agree with it. So I'll just leave it like that. Okay, so we do have a first and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none. We can go back now into the changes. If you can go back, Tiffany, to the parcels that we were talking about. The Tillicum.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. I don't know that I have them listed in the.
No, no, but just up here. We, we just have to go back. Oh, I see what you mean. If you don't have them listed.
Yeah. And so if you want to call it option one or option two, that will be clear because one, if you remember, was exactly the parcels that the various private parties requested be rezoned. Option two was expanding it to the larger footprint to make more sense geographically with blocks. So option one or option two will be clear for the record.
Okay. Do everyone understand that?
For clarification, for clarification, Chair, option two includes the, the properties that Mr. Guerrero spoke of.
Yeah, both of them do, but the other one is just to, yes, excuse me. So we're looking for a motion then for either option one or option two is what we're looking for?
I would, I would motion for option two.
Okay. Mr. Combs made a motion for option two. Do I hear a second? Mr. Pearson made a second. Any discussion? Mr. Wagaman?
Could you just explain the options again?
Yeah.
I just want to make sure I understand.
Option one, if, I'm sorry, I don't have this in tonight's presentation, but if you remember, there was the one parcel that was going to be remaining and changed, those open space and recreation where Bill's Boathouse was located. And then around it, there were three different parcels that had been requested to rezone. One was the Sycamore Island Corporation. One was from, excuse me, Habitat for Humanity. And then there was one more that might have been from the city. That would have been option one. Great. Option two includes a number more where it was a square block to rezone rather than just single parcels kind of haphazard. So it was returning, I'm sorry, keeping the Bill's Boathouse as open space recreation, the one immediately adjacent to it. And then two blocks of parcels on either side of that longer parcel would also move from R3 to MR2. So.
And that was option?
Option two is the larger rezone. Option one is just, is fewer parcels.
So we do have a motion in a second on option two. Any further discussion? Okay, so all those in favor by saying aye on option two.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none. Motion passed for option two of the number two amendment.
Thank you.
Yes. And do we have one more than?
I think Mr. Combs.
Mr. Combs.
I was just going to make a motion that we amend the Tillicum Neighborhood Plan with the edit that's outlined in the agenda there. Just from done to ongoing for the work that's there, just so it reflects accurately in the report.
So this would be Item B8 in the addendum to the Tillicum Neighborhood Plan that would be adopted as part of tonight's package.
Okay, Mr. Combs did make a motion on that change. Mr. Pearson, second. Any discussion? Seeing or hearing none? All those in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing or seeing none? That motion passes as well. Okay. That was easy.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for the.
To you, I think we had it easy.
It was, geez, that was a long process, but I'm glad we got through it. So I appreciate it. Okay, now moving over to a discussion of the tree preservation code update.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Sorry. Courtney Brunel, Lisa Greeter, and Alex Hancock are all here this evening to.
Welcome to you all. Thank you again for coming before us and hoping to get this thing closer to the finish line.
Us too. Thank you, Chair. Good evening, commissioners. Tonight, I am again joined by Lisa and Alex, and we are going to introduce the first draft of the tree preservation code and critical area amendments. This is based off of the feedback that we've received from the planning commission via the survey as well as by, through our discussions. Just a brief summary, what we heard was that by and large, when it comes to significant trees, a lot of our existing code seems to work pretty well. And there were several commissioners that opted for no change on several selections. So what we are presenting tonight is essentially a code that applies the, much of the existing regulations for all significant trees except for Oregon white oak trees. And with that, you'll see some additional language for protections for these Oregon white oak trees. And this is based off of feedback we've received from the community, the ad hoc committee, as well as some of the planning commissioners. So if it seemed that there was majority interest, I won't say necessarily support, but majority interest in seeing some of these additional protections and provisions, we've plugged it in. As Dave mentioned, this is a draft. So we are looking again for some feedback before we take this necessarily to hearing. If there's something that you'd like to see struck right away, please feel free to say that. Otherwise, the plan will be that we will introduce these initial red lines to the community, so that when we go to public hearing on July 6th, they're ready to speak to those specific code provisions that are of interest to them. And then based off of that feedback, as well as your own feedback, we will be able to make additional revisions through the workshop method that we've been using in the last couple of meetings to continue to revise the code. So with that, we have Lisa, who's going to go over the critical areas ordinance edits, and Alex, who's going to go over Title 3 or Article 3, which is the tree preservation code. So Alex, we'll start with you. Thank you so much.
Hey, great. Thank you. And I will share my screen here. So we do have a lot of red lines in this Article 3 for tree preservation. Just want to say that some pieces are just formatting changes. Some are sections that have been moved from one place to another just to ensure a better flow of information. And then some others are the more substantial changes that we've discussed at previous meetings, and so we'll go into all of those details today. So to start us off in the purpose section, we saw this last week as well, trying to zoom in as much as possible here. So for the canopy goal, the addition of a canopy goal, we heard your feedback. And rather than the 40% tree canopy cover goal, we have inserted 30% tree canopy cover by the year 2050. And just want to remind you that, that, that date, that year, that, that is flexible as well. So those, those are the two numbers that we're looking at, the 30% and the 2050. And as we move into the exemptions section. So this section, we've included that it specifically does not apply to the Oregon white oaks. And we have added a section for protection standards for Oregon white oaks at the end of this code section, so we reference that in the beginning here. So you'll see that the exemption for 17,000 square foot, single-family residential zones is still included here. And that, of course, again, that the Oregon white oaks are exempt from this section of the code. And then we have struck the industrially zoned properties from this portion of the code, and that was based off of staff's explanation last week of the appeals and concerns that have come with the, this exemption as this went into place in 2020. And so the changes that are reflected in this version reflect the prior version.
Excuse me, Alex, can you go back just to this number, the 18A 70.310? Number A, it says lots less than 17,000. Has that, that number, you know, originally went down to 10,000? So is that kind of the structure back up to 17,000?
It is back up to 17,000 in this version, and that was based on some feedback that we had received that the, that we really don't want to be overly burdensome on the single-family residential properties and want to keep this process as simple as possible with less confusion. So and Courtney, figure you might want to have something to add there?
Yeah, the individual responses that we received back from the planning commissioners, the majority of those responses was to keep the 17,000 square foot lot exemption. In terms of administering the code, it also makes sense if we are especially to put additional protections on Gary Oaks, that if we're planning to keep some level of residential lot exemption, the existing exemption remain the same. That way, in terms of public education, our public education and outreach can really be focused on Gary Oaks rather than focused on a lot size reduction down to 10,000 square feet as well as Gary Oaks. So we were kind of picking and choosing what makes the most sense to emphasize. And in this version, and based off of commission feedback, we stuck with the 17,000 square feet exemption, which is what we have today.
Great. Thank you. I appreciate that. Mr. Wagaman?
And then just moving down to the next one, the B, where the industrially zoned properties exemption is removed. Would, would that possibly suggest that we're not business friendly?
No. So the industrially zoned exemption actually just came to fruition in 2020. It hasn't been widely used, but in the couple of instances that it has been used, we have received appeals. And the appeals are again surrounding those Gary Oak properties. So what we are proposing is to remove them from the exemption list and go back to what was working prior to, in 2020. And so for industrially zoned properties and commercial properties, which you'll see later on, the ratio for retention is still pretty small. It's only 10% of interior trees and then perimeter trees, I want to say it's 50%, but those provisions are, we're suggesting no changes to the retention standard that is found today for commercial properties. Industrially zoned properties are going to go back to what we used to have prior to this code version.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. Continue on.
Okay, thank you. So those are the only changes we have for the exemption section of the code. Just some formatting changes from there.
Just as a note to the commission, this is Dave. Alex, you'll notice that they're, that we're using the existing code quite a bit. And I think that's what we were hearing from the City Council or from the planning commission was, you know, amend the code to address the issue and see if we can do it in such a way that makes it administratively more reasonable. So you'll see this and you'll see, well, where are all the changes? The changes are very, very specific to address the issues that have been before the city most recently. So stay tuned. I think you'll, you'll find this interesting.
Good. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. So in this next section for significant tree preservation, in the beginning standards here, this is something that we had discussed last week as well, that the code here reflects a measure of four inches for protection of the Oregon white oaks. And we just flip flopped this so that Oregon white oaks is the primary name of the tree and then also known as Gary Oaks. So we recognize that four inches is the, the lowest with, throughout the region. But there has not been opposition that seemed amenable thus far in discussions. So that is something that we can look at changing, but this is based on all of the discussions so far.
Alex, this is a comment from Dave again. Four inches for a Gary Oak tree is roughly how many years? 20 to 25?
Yes. Yeah, it can be about 20, 20 years.
Great.
Okay. So we'll keep moving down here to the trimming section is really just moved from the end of this code section up here because it makes more sense for the flow of information. Just stating that trimming of tree limbs and branches for purposes of vegetation management is permitted. And as long as you are not causing harm to the tree, that will cause it to be a safety hazard. And you'll see at the end of this document, we've included definitions to support proper pruning and trimming practices. And so here we have, as we get into the preservation criteria section, this draft reflects maximum tree removal that is allowed on single-family residential properties. And this is currently how the code is structured. So the major difference here is that the, there is an addition of a streamlined permit process for properties greater than 17,000 square feet. And so this still obviously includes that exemption for properties less than 17,000 square feet. But the streamlined permit process that you saw last week with the one pager permit is what is reflected by this criteria here. So that's when this would get triggered.
And for administrative purposes, the reason that this, this would be a staff recommendation is that right now with the portion that's now struck or proposed to be struck without a permit, it's impossible to track these figures. And so we have folks that are able to remove trees and city, the city has no way to track if they've reached or surpassed that five-year figure. And so we'll get into the permit details a little later on, but as Alex mentioned, this would be a simple administrative permit that we would, as staff, review against this table to see that they are complying rather than just having essentially a self-certification. The other item that I just wanted to point out is, as this has been presented to you in the past, this was the alternative options were the shade tree or the unit retention. So minimum number of trees to be retained based off of units or based off of shade tree canopy. Based off of the comments that we received from the commission in the voting matrix, it seems that no change was the one, the majority supported. And so that's why we decided to take this approach to look at maximum tree removal rather than focus on retention, which again is one less change that we would have to focus on public outreach for.
Yes, Mr. Pearson?
So the, the way, I guess I'm a little bit confused. The way this reads is, is it, I guess in the beginning, we had the, that said everything except for the white oaks were exempt from the under 17,000. So is that, does this mean that you can still, you know, you can remove however many significant trees on lots under 17,000 square feet except the Gary Oaks? Or the, okay, and those do require a permit anytime you remove any of the Gary Oak significant trees?
Yes.
On any lot size?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Gotcha. Great. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. So moving on down, here we have struck the buffers and sensitive critical areas portion of the code. And that is actually added back in later, but without the word sensitive because that had, it's not a standard term and it hadn't been defined in this code section. And it doesn't add any substance to the definition. And it doesn't add any substance to the definition here. So that you'll see that added back in later. And here the tree retention plan required. This has been reshaped and moved. So you will see this in the next sections here. So for tree removal permits, now we're getting into the permit process. And so there is approval required for the removal of any significant tree. And obviously those exemptions at the beginning are still intact here, but this is for all properties that are not exempted. Tree permits for residential lots or not associated with a project permit or plan that's included as its own section here so that we have the criteria for the permit process and having that be that streamlined administrative permit. And the criteria and the process are outlined here. And one thing to note here is that a tree retention plan may be required and that the director will have the final review and say about any modifications or denials for the permit.
Yes, Mr. Buwer.
If Courtney could go into some detail about this section as it pertains to permits and fees. Again, this is administrative. So if it's a single family residential lot where you're not proposing development, it's an administrative process and you actually come in for a permit, but you don't pay a fee unless it's affiliated with removal of a Oregon White Oak. Is that correct, Courtney?
Yes, for the almost. So it it there would be no fee just to get in the door with that one page application is what we would suggest. Staff again would review that compared to the table that we just shared to ensure that they're not exceeding the maximum number of trees that can be removed in any given period. Depending on their responses, let's say that they were exceeding the number of given trees or there was an Oregon White Oak on site. That is when we would require a tree retention plan and additional analysis and may want to consider some marginal fee to account for that additional review. But assuming that they are meeting the requirements outlined in that table, they would be able to just be administratively approved. And I again hesitate to say the term over the counter, but I think that that's kind of an industry standard term. But very quickly, we would intend to get these permits reviewed and sent back out to applicants.
Yes, Mr. Combs.
To clarify, if we had a single family lot ready to, you know, that you wanted to put a house on, there's four Gary Oaks on it and it's a, you know, ten thousand square foot lot or seventeen, just to make it exact for our purposes here. Are you allowed to remove any or all of those trees and replant without having to pay a bunch of fees related to it just to build the house? It and just walk me through it because I, all the lots that I see right now that are open or undeveloped are Gary Oaked. And so I'm trying to figure out how we preserve them without be basically creating, you know, private parks.
You're moving a little ahead of us. We do have
Okay.
process outlined a little bit later.
Put that in future. I definitely do not want to spend extra time on it. So if we have it later, let's do that.
We do and happy to answer any questions that you have about it after we review.
Perfect.
Yeah, and just to clarify, this one is for residential lots not associated with a project permit or plan. So that's just again emphasizing Courtney's point there. And so the tree permits in non residential zones or those that are associated with a project permit or plan. So this is moving along to the section that we we use a lot of the same language here that is existing in the code that allows you to submit a tree retention plan with a tree survey where you indicate where all of the trees are and you indicate where those are located that you will be preserving versus those to be removed. And then there is, again, we're just reemphasizing that Oregon White Oaks that are to be retained on a site shall be indicated on the site plan with the critical root zone protection, which we will get to again later in in the section. But this does not mean that all of the Oregon White Oaks will be protected for a a new newly developed property. But yeah, Courtney, do you want to chime in on anything here?
Sure. So the first thing that I'd want to emphasize is just that you notice there aren't a lot of red lines. This is the way that we currently process tree removal permits. So we're we're using the same process that we currently have. What we've really added is that administrative process in order for us to be able to track the reviews. And then we've added again this section specific to Oregon White Oaks. We're just trying to drop these breadcrumbs so that there's no confusion if somebody was to fit to a specific part of the code. But aside from that, the the process would largely remain the same as what we have today.
Great, thank you. And as you saw last week, we have incorporated some red lines to include heritage trees. And this goes back to chapter two where the the landscape committee, I'm sorry, not landscape committee, the Thank you. So that is where we're establishing the process for designating heritage trees. And then in this section, this just has to do with the heritage tree removal and that a permit is required for removal of heritage tree and that you will need to go through a review with city staff and an ISA certified arborist. So that is just to support the heritage tree program, which again will be a voluntary program that individuals can nominate trees for. And as we continue down, this section here is actually what we had already reviewed, but it has been moved. So it is just no longer in this location and we obviously modified it before. So this is having to do with the removal of trees. And for replacement, we, as you saw last week, we had options here for onsite replacement based on DBH size. And that is the same ratio of two to one of the total diameter inches for all the replacement trees. And then option B here is based on canopy coverage. And that is if the applicant works with a certified arborist to come up with a planting plan that a replanting plan that calculates and compensates for the canopy that has been lost with removals so that the newly planted trees will be planted in the right locations to grow to maturity and make up for that canopy. And again, not a lot of red lines here. This trimming section was just moved up, so we already reviewed that. And here we have arrived at the incentives portion of the code. So this is for incentivizing the preservation of significant trees and and also Oregon White Oaks throughout the city. So what we've done here, it's mostly the same as what you saw last week, but we have added additional code sections to reflect that they would be like for parking reduction. We have that here. It had only been indicated for code section eighteen A, but we have added eighteen B and eighteen C. And just added a little bit more of a description and code language to reflect each one of these. So again, for density increase, expanded it to be citywide and a little bit more description here. Master plan flexibility has remained the same as you saw last week. And these other incentives are again the same. We did add a building setback reduction incentive. And that would be, the way this is phrased, is that the director may reduce a rear yard and or side yard building setback to compensate for the preservation of a significant tree. And that gives the flexibility for a site plan that wants to work to preserve the trees but needs some allowances to do so. And so that is it for the the incentive section. And now we're on to enforcement. And this was relocated from a different section. And we did add the portion here about malicious cutting. We did take out the word willful just so that there's no confusion there. And that malicious cutting may result in the tripling of the amount of the replacement value. Now, for both of these, they would end up in the five hundred dollars fine. But then this, the malicious cutting is where there is the three times penalty. And this really just breaks enforcement down into two separate areas. The first being those who are cooperative and want to correct the the wrongdoing that they've done and then work with the city. And then those that are obviously doing it in spite of being informed of what the regulations are.
Mr. Buwer.
Yeah, just as information, a year ago, we went through and amended our public nuisance codes. So if you violate a permit, you can also go after a property owner with a nuisance violation as well. So that was expanded to provide for unique circumstances. So it is possible that if a person is involved in malicious cutting, not only would they receive fines, but the city of Lakewood could also use its nuisance codes to further enact enforcement if it's desired, just an FYI.
Great, thank you. Go ahead, Alex.
Okay, so here we have added then this section for Oregon White Oak preservation. We've included a definition here of what the individual tree for Oregon White Oak and the importance of it as priority habitat as designated by the State Department of Fish and Wildlife. And that in Lakewood, both individual trees and stands of trees are protected as critical fish and wildlife habitat area. And so this is the section that Lisa will talk more on. The changes that have been made to the chapter fourteen fish and wildlife habitat areas. And that this portion of the code to protect Oregon White Oaks does apply to all zoning districts. And so as we get into these additions here, everything looks the same as what you saw last week. So that single trees greater than twenty inches will automatically become critical areas as defined and that Lisa will go into more detail later. And just establishing that permits for all Oregon White Oaks and all trees within critical areas will be required. And removal or topping regardless of the size of the tree is not allowed. And so that's again where we get into some definitions on proper pruning practices. And Oregon White Oaks greater than twenty inches again are automatically become critical areas. And then for those Oregon White Oaks that are greater than four inch DBH but less than twenty inch DBH, they may be removed subject to the following conditions. And so there is a process for the the removal of Oregon White Oaks so long as there's they are not located within a critical area as defined by chapter fourteen, that there's no demonstrated alternative. And, you know, that takes into account the streets, utilities and other onsite improvements. And that mitigation plantings are required at a two to one ratio. Last week, we had presented a three to one ratio, but the feedback that we received is that that should be consistent with all other replant requirements and go back to the two to one ratio. And we have outlined here, construction operations. Now, previous, in a different section in the code, there are construction measures for tree preservation for all tree species. But these are additional protections for Oregon White Oaks during construction. And that includes some definitions of critical root zone and and specifications around the fencing and the way that that Oregon White Oaks need to be protected during construction. So and that a tree protection plan may be produced with a certified arborist so that in the cases that these protective measures cannot be met due to certain conditions, that that true protection plan is prepared. And also that no hard surface will be allowed within the drip line of an Oregon White Oak. And we do include the, and that's where possible, and an administrative variance may be allowed for hard surfaces up to twenty five percent of the area within the drip line. And again, we do have some clarifying definitions in the last section.
Excuse me, Alex. One question is, last time we talked, it was regarding the right of way. So in other words, if the city, you know, needed to, you know, do something in the right of way, I don't know if I just missed that. So the city then would still have to go through the permitting process if there was a Gary White Oak.
I'm going to put Courtney on the spot, ask her to address that question.
Okay, I didn't want to go too much farther because I wanted, okay, Ms. Courtney?
Yes, the the short answer is yes, there is an exemption for some, Alex, if you'll move up just a little bit. So between those four and twenty inches, I believe that we specified utility lines here. And also in order to be able to construct, if it's over twenty inches and Lisa is going to present, there is some flexibility that we've embedded into the critical areas ordinance as well. But if it's over twenty inches, then yes, they would need to come in regardless. They'd need to come in with a permit and they would need to provide for some mitigation. So we would review it and a mitigation would be assessed at a two to one ratio for any significant Gary Oak tree removal, which would be anything on this code, four inches or greater, under our existing provision, six inches or greater, always would require mitigation.
Okay.
This is going to require the Public Works and Engineering Department to be a little bit more careful when they propose sidewalk projects so that they take this into account and timelines in case they need to go before the hearing examiner for a reasonable use permit. So that's something that is a new administrative layer in order to preserve white white Oaks in the right of way of a certain size. So I want to be very clear, the commission and the council understands that when we get to that point.
And so far, the Public Works Director is in support. It's worth saying that, that it was partially his idea to impose some regulations on street tree replacement and as well as holding them accountable for Gary Oak preservation.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, Mr. Pearson had a question.
Yeah, so what is the definition of a stand? Is that like three trees, four trees?
More than one.
More than one, okay. That's okay. And then so individual White Oaks or stands, you know, four inches to less than twenty may be removed subject to the following. If they're not located in a critical area, but if you have two of them, that's a critical area. So they you can't remove them. How does that, is that like a circular situation?
So in order to be a critical area, you have to be an individual oak over the over twenty inches or a stand with an average DBH of over twenty inches. So if you have a stand of smaller trees, and we see this a lot, you know, that the average DBH when you take the stand collectively ends up being under twenty, then that would not be considered a critical area. This is meant to include the the section that we had struck above, which would be like our flood plain, wetlands, other types of critical areas as well as Gary Oaks. So we tried to include that all in the same area. And that's why you see critical areas mentioned again in this section.
Okay, thanks.
Yep, Mr. Pearson, we've had some extensive conversations on this myself and Courtney today. A good example is I have three Gary Oaks on my property and it's a stand. So therefore, it's a critical area. So the question I asked Courtney is, what constitutes the critical area, which would be the tree canopy? Am I got that right so far, Courtney?
Yes, so the, yeah, the critical area would be the trees themselves as well as their canopy. And this is again, using the definition by DFW, Department of Fish and Wildlife and their best practice. We took this, these definitions directly from Fish and Wildlife definitions.
But what complicates this even more, and I bring this up because this is what's going to happen when we get into administration, those trees cost property, cross property lines. So that critical area is on my property and it's on my neighbor's property.
Don't jump too far ahead though, because we still have I share that before.
Lisa Gruder is going to get into the critical areas code, so that's going to provide some clarification. But I just wanted to Lisa Gruder is gonna get into the critical areas code, so that's gonna provide some clarification, but I just wanted to give you some examples.
Thank you. Okay, um, moving to the city tree fund section, we reviewed this with you last week as well. So there are no new changes here, just that um, tree permit fees and penalties are included in the funding sources. And the restoration and enhancement of native trees like Oregon white oaks are included in the funding purposes section. And at the end, we have a definition section. These are um, definitions of words using ISA industry standards. ANSI A three hundred is the industry standard for tree care. So when it comes to proper pruning and trimming, um, this is where all ISA certified arborists gather their proper practices. So um, it's important to include that there because these standards are updated um, every so often. And so this is something that um, grows and changes with the industry. Um, certified arborist is defined here because it is referenced throughout the um, throughout the code. And then critical root zone and drip line are both defined here because they're both referenced. But a critical root zone can be determined using the drip line. However, it is possible for a certified arborist to make a determination about where the most vital area of soil is for the root system of the specific species of tree. And drip line, we've included a way, um, obviously when you're looking down, um, like a bird's eye view at a tree, it would be, the drip line would be the outline of the contour of the tree canopy. Um, there is an industry standard that at a minimum, the drip line is a circle whose diameter is fifteen times the tree's DBH. That's a calculation that we can include here. We can adjust that. It is the standard, but it's um, able to be redefined if necessary for um, a local municipality for something that's more relevant. But um, DBH is defined just for clarity's sake. Um, pruning and root pruning are both the proper terminology for using the industry standards to um, for proper practice.
Excuse me, wait a minute, Alex, we just want to go back. Mr. Pearson had another question.
Just real quick, um, so the, the drip line, so trees are obviously irregular shaped and their drip lines are. So is it the, i- is it a um, like a real, you know, oddball shape of a drip line, or are you measuring the farthest one and assigning that a radius?
It can be an odd shape, if that's what, um, for the drip line itself, that's, it can be an odd shape. Or if um, the tree, if you would rather uh, calculate it with a circle, um, the diameter is fifteen times the tree's DBH, but that obviously for all trees does not um, work out very well. If they have an asymmetrical um, canopy, then it's not truly reflective of the drip line, so.
Yeah, I think these white oaks are of that. They're a lot different than a fir tree where it would be, you know, a pretty, s- pretty circular, you know, radius around it. You can get a Gary oak that's kind of leaning and it's like, might not have any drip line on this side, but have a twenty-five foot drip line on the other side. So that, that backside wouldn't, you know, really, you would still have the critical root zone portion of it, but you wouldn't have like a huge drip line, I guess, if that's.
Right, right, that's exactly right. Um, it, because the drip line is based on looking top down, but then the critical root zone is what's underground.
Thanks.
Great, thank you.
And again, so um, pruning and root pruning are, they use industry standards. So that's, that's how we refer to when um, uh, proper pruning practices. Whereas um, trimming can really be um, in reference to a limb, a branch, a root, or um, even um, like bushes and, and smaller foliage, that's um, trimming is more widely used. But it does include both pruning and cutting. And then topping is um, important because it's specifically inappropriate pruning techniques. And um, that has such a drastic impact on the tree that it has created a risk, um, a tree stress to the point of decay and disease. And um, most of the times it is, um, it effectively kills the tree when you're topping a tree. So it's important to call that out as something that's not allowed by the code. And that is it for this section of the code. So um, we can do questions on this or Courtney, however you'd like.
I suggest we move straight over to the critical areas ordinance before we start talking about questions, because I think many of them will likely have to do with the Gary oak provisions.
Sure. Okay.
Mr. Chair, you have a question? Oh, sorry, Mr. Wegeman.
I, I have a couple of questions. Um, first one, sometimes with fir trees, you talk about um, taking some branches out so that they're not susceptible to high winds and those kind of things. Is that an acceptable thing?
Yes, there, there are plenty of proper pruning practices that um, are, they're encouraged because it's good for the tree. And it's good for the conditions, the site. Um, uh, obviously with utilities, it's um, encouraged to reduce risk and hazard situations. So there are many, uh, many situations that pruning is, is vital.
And topping as well, we aren't um, suggesting any changes to the code. And our code prefer all significant trees aside from Gary oaks when it comes to topping. And right now, topping is not something that would require a permit necessarily. We do see this from time to time with utility companies coming through and topping trees. Um, as long as it's not a Gary oak, we wouldn't suggest any change at this point outside of what the current code allows.
Hmm, oh, I, I mean, it just, to me, it seems a shame to top because you, you start getting some dangerous issues because they start sprouting out at the top and then you get those things that break off in a windstorm. So if, if we did something on topping, how about, you know, one of the things that certainly fir trees, when they start getting tall, you, you know, they block the view of the mountain and, which is kind of frustrating. Would it be permissible to uh, and when it gets to a certain height, take some limbs out in the middle? So that you would have a view? Um, would that be something that could be acceptable?
So.
Draft, yes.
Okay, and, and then the, the next comment I have is, you know, in some of the places you talked about replenishing trees. Um, if, if we, if we look at the city as a whole and say, hey, where would be some nice places to have trees? And since the, the, the white oak or the Gary oak is, is kind of the um, premier tree for what we're talking here. Could, could we start saying, and get ahead of the game a little bit and say, hey, here would be a good place to plant them? And then start working with citizens and community and doing some of those kind of things? Would that make sense?
Yes, I think that um, from an administrative perspective, that would be something great to see. Depending on the way that the code goes, you may see a recommendation or um, movement from city council to form some type of urban forestry department, which would be who would, the division that would oversee that type of activity likely. Um, and if there was that type of a department, they would of course have to have a work plan. And perhaps that is one of the items that's assigned as part of that work plan would be focusing on a replacement strategy and incentivizing um, for the city to be able to partner with private property owners in order to replant and grow the canopy, especially in those targeted areas that we reviewed a couple of meetings back.
Mr. Bueller.
This discussion is not really appropriate to the tree preservation code. Uh, I will let you know that the department is proposing a, a tree replacement program as a part of the upcoming budget of approximately two hundred thousand dollars. So if we're going to do a tree replacement, if that's something that, that the commission and council wants to do, um, that will be part of a budget proposal that the council will consider in the fall.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it. Okay, continue on.
Trying to find the file, okay. Um, hopefully you're seeing something that says environmental protection at the top?
Yes.
Okay, great. I've highlighted in yellow the two sections we're gonna focus on this evening. A subsection being added to fourteen one five four, fish and wildlife habitat specific to um, Oregon white oak. Uh, and then some definitions um, that go with that. We've just been talking about some of that. It, it has to do with the um, reference to large individual trees over twenty inches as being part of the critical area. But there's some other definitions there too that we'll take a look at. So I'm gonna go to this fourteen one five four where we've added in a section um, specific to Oregon white oak. The current code only references management recommendations from DFW in an earlier section. This would um, also refer to those management's standards, but it would also have other standards. And it would get at um, principles of protecting the priority Oregon white oak trees and woodlands or stands as we were talking about. Um, it would also establish some standards for uh, some development that would be considered a reasonable use. Um, so if you do have critical area uh, with priority Oregon white oak trees or stands, there would be some administrative allowances. And, and then if you can't meet those, then there is a full reasonable use exception. Um, so we start off at the top with um, activities uh, that could top, damage, destroy, et cetera, a tree are not allowed except where permitted by this chapter. Um, section B is referring to um, suitable protective measures. So you may not be harming the critical area during construction, but there could be some protective standards. And Alex covered those, um, construction standards um, towards the end of her section. So we're basically cross referencing to those. And then we have allowances for what could happen within a critical area. So we start with removal of diseased trees or trees that present an imminent threat to properties. Uh, the director can require a report. Trimming um, is also allowed when it's needed for safety or public welfare or to remove diseased or dead branches um, or branches that hang over an existing building or interfere with utility or right of way access. That's similar um, to the standards that Alex presented for trees that are um, regulated by the tree code. Um, we're just applying them to the larger trees that are regulated in the critical areas regulations. So we're still in this section that says what can you do within this uh, critical area? So here we get to section three, which is um, allowing for a modest single family home and associated accessory structures and access. Um, the numbers that we've proposed here are based on agency best practices and uh, Department of Commerce uh, and other agency guidance for reasonable use exceptions. Basically, we're writing an administrative reasonable use for a modest sized home with parameters that the staff could apply. Um, and then if something can't meet these parameters, like uh, if the single family proposal can't meet these parameters, there's still the regular reasonable use exception process. So uh, that's single family. Um, so basically, they would show that they've, they've tried the incentives or the other uh, code provisions that Alex referenced to try to make something work. Um, like the setbacks or height or other, other things. But if those are insufficient to result in a feasible development, then the city could allow um, a modest sized home and accessory structures and access administratively. So that's the single family side. And then the next section is the non-single family side. Um, so commercial, industrial, multifamily, institutional or other development. So on these properties where um, the Oregon white oak trees and woodland does not exceed one acre, um, then there's some, pardon me, I'll go back down there. Uh, then there's some administrative adjustments that could be made. Um, if there, if the area that is in critical area uh, exceeds one acre, then they would go through the normal reasonable use uh, exception process. And you'll see when we get into the definitions, uh, where, you know, we're sticking with this one acre because it's relevant to the definitions. Um, but again, if you've tried all the application of incentives and it's insufficient to result in a feasible development, then the city could allow for removal or trimming to accommodate a legal use of property with the least possible impact. Um, and so there's several criteria here, uh, including developing a mitigation plan that would also apply to the single family. Um, if they need to do mitigation, they have the two to one replacement ratio. That's similar to the trees that would be subject to the, the regular tree code, that's similar. So basically, if you're able to do these administrative approvals of either a single family, a modest single family or uh, non-single family, um, that meets the parameters, then there's, there's specific findings here that the staff would make. Um, and I think Courtney, it's fair to say that that was one of the considerations um, in uh, in developing the code was, sometimes the standards aren't clearly defined in such a way that, that it's easy to write up either an approval or a recommended denial. So we wanted to put in um, some clear standards of review. Um, so required findings. And then this section D is if the application of this section would deny all reasonable use, then go see this other section that's already in the critical areas regulations um, that, that a property owner could um, apply. So that's the main substantive change is to add this section. And then the other substantive changes are in the definitions. So we were talking about in, in some of the criteria that the applicant needs to show that they, they don't have a feasible development. Um, that, so there's a definition of feasible later that we'll talk about. And then the other definition is um, adjusting the critical areas definition for Oregon white oak to better match the state definition. So we'll go there now.
Lisa, one, uh, one moment, please. Mr. Bueller.
Uh, just for the commission's edification, a reasonable use uh, exception permit requires a trip to the hearing examiner in a public hearing. So there is a different permitting requirement if you're going to remove an oak. I do have a question for Lisa, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Uh, on the exemption, if you want to call it that, for a single family house of uh, fifteen hundred square feet, could you go up just a little bit?
Sure.
Okay, stop right there. So.
It's a building footprint. So in theory, your first floor is fifteen hundred square feet.
Okay, but if you do have to remove a, a, a Oregon white oak, you're still subject to the two to one replacement, even in this, this situation.
That's right, yes. So a minimum two to one replacement ratio.
Yes, Mr. Pearson.
Uh, so what is the, the max size for an ADU allowed by city code right now? Is it a thousand or twelve fifty or something?
I believe it's a thousand square feet.
Yeah, um. I mean, I guess I would be in favor of changing that six hundred to a thousand square feet as you're already kind of, you know, an ADU is pretty small and six hundred square feet is pretty tiny, so.
We were basing this off of um, recent MRSC language regarding ADUs and the size of a garage. So in our thought, the twenty-four by twenty-four ends up being five ninety-eight, I think, for a garage, a two-car garage. And then we just matched that thinking an ADU could be above the garage or in addition as a separate.
Yeah, and I, I just, you know, with promoting density and some, you know, some live, like, no one wants to live in six hundred square feet, but a thousand is doable type of thing. Um, that was just my comment.
Okay, Mr. Combs.
Yeah, I think that, I, I, that's one of them. That was one of my uh, uh, questions as well. It sounds like the clarification was fifteen hundred square foot footprint, not residence, right?
That's right, maximum building footprint.
Okay, and, 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 all right, so that, that seems reasonable. I guess I would uh, second, you know, the, or agree with uh, Mr. Pearson that the, if we can adjust ADU, try and not inhibit it too much. Um, and it, whatever looks reasonable, you guys, I, I, I mean, we're just trying to come up with something that makes sense. And it sounds like Courtney had some good uh, logic behind it. If there's some way that we can increase it, I think that would make sense. I would agree with the thousand square foot. I, I did have a question a little bit further down as well, under. Under, under the commercial multifamily, a little further down. And so, uh, let's see here.
Number four up here, right there, industrial multifamily.
Yeah. I, I think there is a, a section down below that says, as you're doing these things, and maybe, maybe this, I'm sorry, I don't have the mouse, so I'm kind of like, uh,
Sure.
Percy there, but I, um, basically I saw something that said you had to go into the Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife for a review. Can, if you can find that section, there is. And so, um, I, if we are going through the whole city process, it seemed onerous to have it go through another outside agency for a, a further review. That's just me. I, it just seems like, uh, let's try not to put too many layers on this. And if we can define it locally and just leave it at that. And, and of course, the director could, uh, and there may be more behind it, but that, that was my initial reaction to that. The feasibility of a site, that was, one thing that'd be very helpful to better define because what seems feasible to the property owner may not be feasible to the person who's, uh, you know, chained themselves to the, uh, Gary Oak. And so it's trying to figure out what that right balance is. And then, um, the, at, at the beginning, there was a section that says that the single-family property owner shall not, or, or no one may remove or damage a tree. And I think this is going back to that willful, uh, language. I, I would love to be able to add willful in here, but because it's a little ambiguous, I'm not there right at the top, A, no person shall. I guess I'm just trying to, uh, I, I agree with this. And it says, except as, and I get that, if someone accidentally hurts it, I mean, they technically are damaging it. Some kids are climbing a tree and break the branch. Are they subject to some, without adding some kind of intent in there? I think that we want to show that they're trying to do damage to it. Does that make sense? And then, um, I liked that you had different data specific to the use. I think that that's smart and it, it says, we're not going to try and handcuff you because you're trying to work with us on this. So I don't, I didn't get a good enough look at all the multifamily commercial to see if there's too many things on there that are restrictive. And Dave, I imagine you've had a chance to look at these. What did you think about these notes? Did these seem manageable from an administrative standpoint?
If I could respond first.
Yeah, yeah, that'd be great.
Just to a couple of the items. First off, the 1,000 square foot, full transparency, as of about 2:00 this afternoon, it was 1,000 square foot. So that's a very easy for us to make a change for the ADU so we can switch.
Perfect. Thank you.
For the provision that WDFW or an arborist may be called in by the director, administratively, that's our insurance policy. And we've received that on a couple of development projects. It's not necessarily required, but the city has been incurring the expense for having these reports done. And then when we go to appeal, having these experts come in, and we're putting that on the applicant if we do need to pull for that expertise. Because as staff, we are not biologists or arborists. And so we need to have some expertise that we can rely on for that. So that's why that portion made its way into this version of the code. And we have gone back and forth a lot with what would make sense for us to be able to administer. And I think once we look at the definition of feasible, you'll see that I had the same initial instinct as you for what the definition of feasible, it might differ depending on person. But it's actually tied to the shoreline management or shoreline master program and other critical areas. And it's not the type of feasibility that we think it is. It's basically that the city is putting on too many criteria that's making it impossible for this site to be developed. And so that would be on the applicant to have to show to us, demonstrate to us, and then that would incite this process. So from my, in my opinion, this code is, we are able to administer it. Not having any provisions specific to Oregon white oaks has been very difficult to administer. It's resulted in more than a year for CIPA review because we've had to hire external experts. The management recommendations by WDFW date back to 1998. They're in the process of reviewing them right now. And they have very little to nothing for urban areas like Lakewood. Most of it is considered east of the Cascades where you have a much more dense findings of oak trees. And so it's been a struggle for us to be able to create and figure out a way to approve or deny projects. So with this, it gives us a pathway. And again, an insurance to be able to get the answers that we need to approve some of these difficult projects administratively and call in those experts without costing the city additional funds.
So, and Courtney, thanks for all that. That was very helpful. Now, remember the example I shared earlier? Imagine we have a property in Tillicum that is right on the commercial strip, zone commercial. We want to see development there. It's an acre and all it has on it is Gary Oaks that are 20 inches or large in diameter or more. How does, do we, walk me through what a, a, a property owner for something like that would need to do in order to effectively build that? And I, I'm just trying to get my mind wrapped around the process because I, I'm not opposed to it. I just want to understand it.
So what we would probably, depending on the size of the, the oaks on site. So you mentioned that the site itself is an acre. I'm assuming that the oaks are not part of a contiguous acre of forested oak, forested oaks. Because if they are, then it would require a reasonable use exception. And I'll tell you, from our current experience, we just went through this with a development project and the mitigation that the city came up with, the applicants themselves actually appealed. So we're getting arguments on both sides of this. So on one hand, without these types of regulations, the city right now is moving forward with hiring biologists, working with WDFW to find mitigation that makes sense to replace oaks that are lost when they're over an acre in size, right? So those very large woodlands are, are difficult. Less than that, it would be the, the applicant's responsibility to show us that essentially it's infeasible for them to preserve all of the oaks and to move forward with a project proposal. From that, they would have, they would hire an arborist or a biologist to certify a mitigation plan that works with the development that they're proposing, that is damaging the critical area as little as possible. So acknowledging that there will be some trees that have to be removed, but there is an effort being made to preserve as many as possible while still getting use of the site. Now, if the city, we are able to also, that's not insurance policy, send that off to WDFW and a third-party biologist who can say, no, they could redesign, they could mitigate, or there is no mitigation that makes sense for this site. And then the city would be able to say, sorry, this doesn't work with the reasonable use, the admin reasonable use. And you do have to go through with that reasonable use exception in front of the hearing examiner. And he would, or they would have the ultimate deciding on the size and the development. But prior to that, we would try to work with applicants and with whoever they hired. And then if we felt the need, getting it certified again by a separate third party to support whatever that development proposal was. And for something like a new commercial, you're, you're also likely going to be subject to CIPA. So this type of review is already required. It's just this gives us, again, a pathway to be able to assign the mitigation and review the projects rather than having to kind of create it from scratch like we're having to today.
Mr. Buwer.
This is a question for Courtney. On the fish and wildlife consultation, how do you feel about giving them a timeline to review in an event that we don't receive comments that we move forward?
I would loop it in with CIPA. So if you're in the critical areas ordinance, the time that we enforce our critical areas is CIPA. And so the typical comment period for that is 15 to 30 days, two weeks to 30 days. And so it would be brought in as part of that review.
So Dave, we could add something here that says it's been reviewed by DFW through CIPA or a qualified biologist.
That would be fine. I mean, I've been trying to assist the commission here in closing this out so that we can see some level of expedition on permits. I will let the commission know that I do have concerns because we have lots and lots of Gary Oaks in Tillicum. And if you're going to be provo- providing affordable housing, I, I really believe that you're going to have to come and talk to the city and our HUD and home programs to help offset the cost of some of the Gary Oak mitigation. So I do believe that we will be using federal subsidies to assist in the mitigation in the future. So that's, that's just something that I'm anticipating.
I also just want to put in that this, you'll hear testimony in a couple of weeks regarding the importance of Gary Oaks to members of this community. You're also going to receive a lot of comments, and you've already received a lot of comments in writing regarding the importance of affordable housing and private property rights. I do think that there is space in the critical areas ordinance or in the tree preservation code to exempt certain areas. And we recently had a hearing examiner's decision that came forward that supported the city's definition of excluding individual oaks and said that because the city did not include those individual oaks, they're not considered to be priority habitat in Lakewood. So we do have some flexibility. Here, what we're looking for is staff, is really just an affirmation of, of what the priorities are. And so we're able to administer our code in the future and hopefully receive less pushback and create a path forward to approve or deny permits again, depending on the, the site conditions. So all that to say, this is one option. But if there's certain concerns, for example, in Tillicum, or if we wanted to, you know, discuss different areas that we would want to exclude possibly geographically from these provisions, I think that we would have the flexibility to take that route as well.
And Courtney, kind of on that line of thinking, if the city wanted to allow more flexibility in Tillicum, for example, it could be maybe an area-wide assessment that could be done, you know, in conjunction with, with whatever agencies that kind of give that advanced mitigation idea, right? So that, that it can facilitate. So there's a, that, that might be another pathway.
Yeah, basically, if you're planning to do development, we've already done the work to tell you what the mitigation would be for when you're coming in and redeveloping the site. And this is how much canopy we'd be looking to see replaced either in this area or elsewhere in the city. And these are your options to go about that.
Okay, great. Thank you. Oh, Mr. Pearson.
Just so I can kind of wrap my head around it a little bit more. You know, today, a, a 10,000 square foot lot or, you know, any, any of these under 17,000 that has a stand of Gary Oaks that are, they're all 10 inches. So that is not a critical area, right? Because the average is not over 20. Is that, or am I wrong?
You're right.
Okay, so now, right now, you could take them all down and without any permits or anything. Is that because you're on a?
Yes, today, yes.
Okay. And tomorrow, you know, whenever this passes, if it does, then you could still cut them down, but it would require a permit and you may be required to, you know, do some planting at like a two-to-one ratio. Is that correct?
Yep.
Okay. Thanks.
Chair, it might be good if we walk through this definition a little bit. And then we can also look at the definition of feasible. So this set of changes would amend the definition of priority of white oak woodlands and add trees and white and woodlands. So it talks about individual trees or stands. So it, it says basically stands that are one acre or larger are considered basically a critical area. Stands of oaks less than one acre or individual trees may be considered priority habitat when. And so this is where we add the individual oak trees at a height of 20 inches or more. This is consistent with the Department of Fish and Wildlife Management Guidelines. It is also similar to example regulations in Pierce County and other places. And then Oregon white oak stands where the trees have an average diameter and breast height of 20 inches or more. That's something that Courtney referenced earlier. And then the city has always had a section that says, you know, or stands of oaks less than one acre that are found to be particularly valuable to fish and wildlife. So this is already in your code and we're trying to amend it a little bit because where it says have large diameter trees, we've basically defined that here with 20 inches or more. So instead of having a looser definition, it would be more specific. And used by priority species will form dominant crowns. That's in the DFW guidelines. We've already said what the diameter of a, of a large tree would be. So we've just made some adjustments here. So I think it's fair to say that this definition would be more consistent with the fish and wildlife guidelines and give the city a little bit more to go on, especially in this last paragraph, as it stands now. So that's the proposed definition. And then if we want to look at the definition of feasible, we've added that up above. We can look at that. So as Courtney mentioned, we were suggesting this definition of feasible because it's been formed under the Shoreline Management Act and it's used for critical areas within shoreline jurisdiction as well as shoreline areas that are within 200 feet of a major water body that you, you do have. And so feasible means that the proposal can't be accomplished with standard technologies. Meaning if a mitigation were to be proposed that was using new technology that was unproven, that, that could be considered, you know, a condition that's infeasible. Or, or the proposal can't achieve its results or it can't result in a legal use. And as Courtney mentioned, the burden is on the applicant to, to demonstrate it's infeasible and that the director can weigh that way and balance that. So the idea is being that we would use a definition that has been road-tested in sort of a similar circumstance.
So for an example, using that commercial lot again, let's say that there were oak trees smacked out in the middle of the property and scattered throughout. And the city's initial reaction based off of our code is, well, they all have to be preserved or that's the goal. So do your best to preserve them all. And you come back and say, well, it is impossible for us to construct the building. We're not going to build, we're not going to build a building around an oak tree, right? That's infeasible. There are not best practices that would allow for that tree to survive or for a building to be built in a way that is cost-effective. We would in turn say, okay, that makes sense. So then please present us with what would be reasonable mitigation in order for you to still have the proposed use, but make it feasible so that you would be able to mitigate for it and not have infeasible restrictions put on you, like not being able to remove any Gary Oak.
Mr. Combs.
Thank you. That's very helpful. And I know we're not quite done with this. I've got some other comments, but I will say this is, uh, this is so much work you guys have done on this. I'm super impressed. And it looks, um, looks like you did a great job taking in all the notes from everyone and implementing them. This, to me, seems so much closer to something that we could use as a working draft. Now, I, I don't know if that's the intent, but it seemed to me from what we heard earlier that that's our goal is to have a, a working draft, not a final thing to approve here tonight, right? So I, I'm very much in favor of a, a lot of what you've put in there. I, I would, I do have some notes on some additional tweaks and stuff like that, but that, that I, I personally would like to see, but I don't know how everyone else feels. But I just wanted to say thank you. This is the, the breadth of fresh air after not having this for a while. I'm sorry you can't hear me because I didn't have this turned on.
We still heard you. Thank you.
Mr. Buwer.
If there are no objections, recognizing that this is a working draft that is subject to change, and I, I do believe there will be changes, is the commission comfortable with us moving forward with, with presenting this to the public as a work? is the commission comfortable with us moving forward with, with presenting this to the public as a working draft? I've heard from one commissioner. I would like to hear from all four, or at least the majority.
Yes, if I could, so this draft, has the ad hoc committee been involved? Naturally, you just put this together. So the ad hoc, it seems to me that it's considerably different. Oh, Mr. Buwer?
You have to remember, what is the purpose of the ad hoc committee versus the purpose of the planning commission?
I hear you.
Okay, the ad hoc committee was to take basically a report with recommendations and forward it to the commission as well as the public. Their goal or purpose is different than yours. They identified the primary objectives on the issues that needed to be solved and gave you their opinion. The commission's role is to do hold the actual public hearing and then enable or promulgate an ordinance for the city of Lakewood to review, a council to review and take action upon. So they're slightly different roles, but they're different. So when this goes out, the ad hoc committee will most likely be provided a working draft for their review. But at this point in time, the ad hoc committee's work is done. So it's really upon the commission now to take on the charge and move it forward. So I want to make sure that that's understood. When we present the report to the, to the commission in its final form, along with the staff report, we will specifically call out the purpose of the commission and the ad hoc committee so that that can be articulated in the meeting, because I know that's going to come up.
Yes, that's the reason why I asked. Thank you for the clarification.
Lisa, did I say that appropriately? You were there at all the meetings, you and Courtney?
Yes, I think that's right. And I think too, we can, in the staff report, refer to their packets and also the packets for the planning commission that, that you considered their recommendations. So the recommendations were forwarded and, and we presented some red lines with various options, including the ad hoc committee options. So I think, Dave, there's sort of substantive record there.
Yep, great, thank you. Appreciate it. Any other comments from Mr. Pearson?
Um, yeah, my, the only, you know, one of the comments that I forwarded was that I just, I don't know, kind of have a gripe about a critical area being one tree. And that's really kind of the deal breaker for me. I would generally support pretty much everything else that I saw today. But that's the one for me is the single tree critical area, so.
Yes, Mr. Wegman, you have a comment?
Yeah, I agree with the comments that there's a lot of work been done here. And I think the discussion's a good thing, you know, going back to what I learned when I came on this commission is that the Growth Management Act gives us a checklist to working through these things. And I think these things are important, you know? I mean, as I said earlier, who doesn't like trees? You know, we all like trees and, but there has to be a plan that allows us to do some of these things. I, I, you know, Mr. Combs talked about the example down in, potentially example in Tillicum, you know, and you got a whole bunch of these white oaks or Gary Oaks in there. And now you can't use the property. I'm thinking saying, wow, if you have property that you want to use for commercial use, couldn't we have a plan where you start a, take a bunch of baby Gary Oaks and figure out where to plant them so that you could maximize the commercial value of the property? You know, could, those are to me some ideas that will make it work. And so to me, it's, as I used to tell my children when we worked on our property here in Lakewood, I don't like to shovel dirt twice. You know, so when we move the dirt, we move it to where it needs to go. And so as we have a plan, and I think that's what this is all about, we have a plan for our community, when do we do the right things and, and what's the timing to maximize what it is we hope to accomplish? And so that, you know, that's the challenge. And we all see Lakewood a little different. So that's why it's important that we have this communication, ad hoc committees, planning commission, and ultimately the council has to make the final. And we can put something together that hopefully works for all of our citizens. So that would be my comment.
Yes, Mr. Buwer?
I appreciate the comments, but all I've heard are comments. It is, is, I would like to be able to say that the commission is okay with moving this forward as a working draft with the understanding that there will be subsequent amendments to it.
Do you want a motion? I'll make a motion.
It doesn't need a motion, but I just want to make some sort of affirmative action here that you're comfortable with that.
I think you've already heard from me that I am. The things that I would just ask the team to keep looking at, I like the idea of advanced mit, I'll just give you the bullets here so you can consider them for future. The advanced mitigation ideas, I think that's a great one to try and help streamline the future work. So we can, you know, get some economies of scale, especially in those areas that are impacted that might not otherwise be able to afford it. The drip line definition, that would be, I think, going by the tree location and the, you know, irregular shape makes sense. I did have a question as it related to the right of way and the proximity that the right of way area is the one that Mr. Buwer mentioned. It was also one that I was concerned about the most because based on the comments from last time, that was an area that we've lost trees and not gained them. And I'm a little concerned that we're losing them, but at the same time also want to have some reasonableness. So if we need to run, rather than chop the tree down, I would rather put some sidewalk there, even if it does go under the drip line and 20% doesn't seem like enough or 25. I would just say have more flexibility on that. So rather than chopping a tree down or having it go through an extra process, let's give the flexibility so that we can retain it. And so maybe just, I would suggest working with the right of way folks again. And Mr. Buwer, how do we avoid making this more work? And it sounds like you, you've already been thinking about it, but that would be one. I'm, I have a question. Actually, I'll save the question to the end. I would just keep massaging this till it works. If we could add reasonableness on the recommendations, Courtney or, yeah, I think it was Courtney that was walking through the list of the single family, multifamily or whatever. And, or Alex, if that was you, I apologize. But just adding a level of reasonableness in so that if, if, as you were going in for a review or, you know, favor it towards the property owner, not favor it towards the city. I would say let it be, if it's reasonable, proceed and something along those lines. And I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me. I would point you right to the spot. It was under B something two. And so the six inch versus four inch, that I, I'm still not convinced on that one. It's not that I don't believe that they're a priority tree. It's just four inches is small. And so I don't mean to be a negative Neil on this, but I would push for the six inch still. I know that's not exactly what everyone's wanting, but I think that going for the smallest possible one in the, you know, is maybe not the approach I would, I would take on that. And then the, the questions I had, the priority habitat that was on my list as well. So I would, if we can massage that one too. And then the last ones are one question for Mr. Buwer and the other one for you guys. Mr. Buwer, the question is related to city staffing on this.
I'm going to get to that in a minute.
Okay, and Mike, and as it relates to permits, review, fees, penalties and heritage tree, all that stuff, arborist, all of this, what is that going to cost with this plan? I know that's hard because you just came up with this today. But if it's not reasonable, how do we chop it up so that we could make it reasonable? And then for this team here, what does it mean, and Courtney, this is probably for you, what does it mean for people? And I'm just going to use a hypothetical. We'll call this guy Ryan. And let's say he owns a house and he has a back patio with the, with the Gary Oak tree. And that patio goes underneath the drip line right now. He wants to go in and add an ADU or an addition to his property. Does he need to bring it all the way up to code, which would mean that, okay, so that you'd be exempt and whatever's existing would be grandfathered in and that's okay?
Yep, legal non-conforming uses. And I would have a difficult time saying that a patio was an issue on a, on a residential lot as well. I don't think, we don't typically require permits for patios decks if they're over a certain height, but not patios.
And even if it's under the drip line though?
No, not, I mean, under our current regulations, no. It would be difficult for me to justify amending that process.
All right, I can sleep better.
Okay, Mr. Buwer does have one question first or one?
Okay, what I'm, what I was suggesting is we're going to take all your comments here this evening. And by the way, the issue of one tree, I have heartburn with too, Mr. Pearson. But we're going to take all these comments. We'll go ahead and release this document. We'll hold the public hearing. We'll come back, close the public hearing at the appropriate time and we'll come back and hopefully have addressed some of these or all of these questions in some form or fashion with a further draft. Okay?
Thank you.
Okay, the next thing. Just because you adopt this ordinance doesn't mean you're done. Because I will be very clear here, if this ordinance gets adopted, we have to have a major public outreach program to the entire community. Okay, second thing is, talking to Courtney, this ordinance is going to be at least one halftime FTE. Talking to the city manager? No, just make it one full, full-time FTE. So one full planner to implement this code. Then we'll need an on-call arborist, because we're going to have lots of questions. So we're going to be able to have to call on a regular basis and ask questions. If you want to move forward with some sort of master mitigation plan, I need to put that in the department's budget for the upcoming budget process. So I don't know how much that's going to cost, but I'm going to probably overestimate so that we have some reasonable number. And then, you know, there's been talk about a tree replacement program. So right now, $200,000. So you're easily up to $350,000 for this tree ordinance. On the issue of fees, there's going to be a push from the community. The city subsidizes the fees. The city manager says no. So 80% cost recovery on this. And a reasonable use exception permit is, is not cheap, particularly for a single family home. So those are some of the issues that are coming forward. I haven't told the city manager all this yet, but I have an idea what this, this is going to look like. You're making a huge investment in the quality of life in the city of Lakewood. I don't think the public generally realizes that yet.
Ms. Tiffany?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would just piggyback on this whole conversation to not consider it in a vacuum, if you will. There's also the climate change implementation process, which very much affects tree canopy and is affected by tree canopy. There's also racial disparity and equity issues which are being brought up in planning now and particularly in the 2024 comprehensive plan process that the city is shortly going to embark on. That's also a big focus. And if you look again, if you remember at the maps, where trees are and where trees aren't in the city, it is in those areas where it's been historically the poorest, the most racially diverse areas that have the least trees. So there's a lot of competing, conflicting, not quite consistent policies right now that all are going to be talked about within the same breath in the planning world for the next couple of years. So as we talk trees, just remember there's all those other things as well.
This is a community investment and it just, just like the rental housing program, this is another, another change in the switch for Lakewood.
Mr. Pearson?
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with moving this forward. Yeah, I do have the gripe on the one tree critical area. But as far as the four to six inches thing, Mr. Buwer noted earlier that it was like a 25-year, I think maybe Lisa or someone had noted that it was like a 25-year tree. And that kind of, I don't know, that kind of clicked for me that it's not, you know, an eight, 10-year fir tree that's, you know, gotten this big or whatever. It's, it's, it's been there for a while. So that was, I was on the same page with that kind of, put me over the edge of the.
Okay, I'm in pretty much agreeance with all of this. I did have some minor concerns as well. I was holding my comments mainly after the public hearing. Sometimes that's to the benefit of myself or one that's sitting up here in the planning commission. I've learned a few things over the years. People might say, hey, you changed your mind. You said this and now you say that. And so just in my history on the planning commission, I elected to reserve my comments until after the public hearing. But not saying any of these comments weren't beneficial from the other fellow commissioners, but that's just my personal belief. So that's why I haven't resubmitted anything to your team. And the team has been great and it is a lot of work and I do appreciate it. Okay, any other comments then from, on your side? Is this the presentation or?
That was the presentation. One last thing though, we will be holding our final tree talk or at least final planned tree talk, and we will be reviewing this draft ordinance or draft code amendments with the public. So if you start to hear some conversations around the 28th of July or June, that might be why. We are advertising it and inviting folks to join us via Zoom to walk through this so that they know what they're providing public comment on. The public comment period is running through June 30th. For any comments that are being received in writing, those will be forwarded on to you right before the Fourth of July weekend for some nice leisure reading. And then we will be holding that public hearing on July 6th and accepting verbal testimony in person as well as virtually. And I believe that the city attorney or assistant city attorney will be attending that meeting to assist with how the public hearing itself is going to be ran. So that's what's to expect next. And then we will continue our efforts. I believe that evening, we will be reviewing or discussing the, whatever the testimony is, depending on how long the testimony lasts and then moving on from there.
Great. I will make a comment and I have already told staff that I will not be in present that night. I, my plane has changed time from 4:30 till 6:30. So it doesn't look like I will be in attendance. So Mr. Brian Pearson is going to be elected to preside over the tree preservation public hearing. So with the assistance with staff and our legal team going to be in present, so. Yes, Ms. Tiffany, you have a question?
No, I was just agreeing with you and, and we'll take care of Mr. Pearson.
Okay, great. Mr. Buwer? Yeah.
And I will also be there in person that evening, so.
Okay, so we have to make a decision if that presentation, and again, thank you so much for your team, Alex and Lisa and Courtney and all of the staff hours. And geez, what a task. So we do appreciate it. So now for fellow commissioners, we have the next topic on our agenda. Do you want to move that to a different date instead of the climate change issue? Would you like to move that to? Mr. Buwer, how long approximately would yours? I mean, to do an adequate job that you want to do?
Let's, let's go to 8:45 and then see where we're at. How's that sound?
Mr. Combs?
It's fine. I, it's good. I have another meeting, so I'm, I'm.
If there's reluctance, that's fine, because, you know, you could end up with lots and lots of questions and then it doesn't move it forward very much. If you want to withhold it, there's a lot on your, your plate at the moment and there's more stuff coming. And I'm going on vacation. So, you know, if we were to hold it for a month, that's fine.
Yeah, that's good. Let's, let's, thank you. We do appreciate that. So then any other final things from staff?
From Mr. Buwer?
No, oh, Mr. and Ms. Tiffany, sorry, excuse me.
That's fine. So we now do have two weeks off. There's five Wednesdays in June. So we will be back in July. July 6th will be the next time. And we will again have. July 6th will be the next time, and we will again have three meetings that month. So one right after the other, again, those first three weeks of the month. Thank you.
Okay, great. Nope. Hey, good. You got you got two weeks to prepare, Mr. Pearson. Okay, so hearing no other ones, we can call this meeting adjourned.